Good evening, Canby, and welcome to the Canby City Council Meeting of August 21st, 2019. Please rise for the invocation.
Dear Father in Heaven, I thank you so much for this wonderful Canby that you have given us to live in. I ask your wisdom, your anointing, your guidance, and your courage upon us tonight as we govern, and I ask your blessing and your protection around each and every person in Canby. In Jesus' name, amen. And now for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. The mayor sends his greetings to everyone tonight. He hopes to make it a little later, depending on how another event goes and Portland traffic. So, Mr. City Administrator, Rick Robinson, do we have any communications tonight?
I do have one item to share with you. We did receive notice from the Government Finance Officers Association that the city's comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFER, for the year 2018 is qualified for the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. As the GFOA indicates, this is the highest form of recognition in government accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. And I want to particularly recognize and express our appreciation to our finance department led by Julie Blums, because this is a significant accomplishment.
Yeah, this is a big deal. Pass on the council stacks.
Yes, I will.
Us as well. And so, a little later down the road, we'll get a plaque to show off?
Yes.
Excellent.
Right now, we just have a letter.
The Myrtlewood plaque will come later. So, very good. Did you have anything else, Rick?
No.
How about Joe or Amanda?
No, thank you for asking.
Nothing there, and Amanda's on later. Alrighty. Next up, we have citizen input and community announcements. And first up, we have Paul Yelvisacker. Wants to address us about fireworks?
Yes.
At the high school. Alrighty.
At the high school football games. Thank you. I was here last year. By the way, hi to everyone. I was here last year and talked about this and, quite frankly, was not happy with the outcome, but that's me personally. I live two blocks from Canby High School. I suffer from chronic pain and PTSD exacerbated by stress and anxiety from the random explosions at the Canby football games. I submitted two letters to the Canby Council on May 22nd. My first letter was a request for help by ending this disruptive tradition. In quotes, my letter was... My second letter was from my physician verifying my condition. The city council initiated a public hearing process to amend Municipal Code 9.48, noise control. They amended the code on August 15th. The new amendment allows fireworks and explosive devices at Canby football games sponsored by the Canby School District. The answer to my request was for help, was bold, but not appreciated. When I am in your neighborhood, I do my best to obey the 20 mile per hour speed limit during school days. I'm not disruptive with random noises that are not ambient to school zones. I would appreciate it if you would extend the same civility to our neighborhood. I have authorized a petition, authored a petition. It is as follows. The Canby School District has chosen to use explosions at the high school football games. These explosions are discriminatory to our neighborhood, not the majority of neighborhoods in Canby, and are disrespectful, uninvited, intrusive, and abusive to us and our pets. There are better and less disruptive ways to celebrate the football games, i.e. cheering, band music, bells, foam fingers, electronic billboards. We request a moratorium from the explosions and to redress the situation. Two veterinary clinics have signed the petition as well as an extended care facility, the Ratcliffe House. Two of the entities are adjacent to the high school. The greater majority of signers of this petition adamantly oppose the use of explosive devices. The following is from the Canby City Council values and goals: honesty, ethics, and accountability. We adhere to the highest standards of honesty, ethical conduct, and accountability that inspire public confidence and trust. Inclusive community, we are committed to open communication and outreach to engage all segments of the community. The following is from the Canby School District: shall promote nondiscrimination in an environment free of harassment based on an individual race, color, religion, gender, sexual orientation, national origin, or disability, marital status, age, and his programs and activities. Think I can make it here. I believe that there is a disconnect between the core values of the city council and the Canby School District because they have chosen to hide behind the veil of tradition to continue using the explosive devices. May I continue for 30 seconds, please?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I have given you new information. Please reassess your core value statements and apply them as written to include us, our neighborhood, inspire us, and give us confidence and trust that you hear us. Promote nondiscrimination, and give us an environment free of harassment, and recognize disabilities. Include us, restore the calm to our neighborhood. It was here before the explosive tradition. Respectfully signed, submitted by the petitioners and me. And if I may, could I leave this with you?
You do. Please leave it with our city attorney there.
Okay, I am done.
Thank you, Paul, for coming, and we will get copies of that to everyone on the council and circle back with the mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I would ask also, Paul, if you haven't done it already, that you present it to the school board and redress your issues and your concerns with the school board directly.
I did.
Okay. And did you get a response from them?
Well, it's a non-response.
Okay.
Paul?
Do you want copies of this, or these are? No, those are your copies.
Paul, I'm sorry. Commissioner Swoon had a question.
Yeah, if you mind. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
I live in your neighborhood, and I don't live quite as close to the school as you, but I want to acknowledge that if you don't live in that neighborhood, I don't think people realize how loud it is and how intense it is. When we were discussing this last year, the school district indicated that they would look for an alternative that wasn't quite as concussive or loud, so that they could continue their tradition of having fireworks, but maybe with a lesser impact to the community. Have you experienced any difference in the last year in the level of concussiveness? Just from, I mean, I'm not quite as close to the school as you, so...
If there is, it's minute. And this is me.
Yeah, sure.
But the people that I have talked to adamantly oppose the explosive devices. I've had one person says she has to sedate her pets during the games. There's other people that said they've lost dogs. I mean, it's just, it's intrusive to our neighborhood. It's not necessary. It hasn't a thing to do with a winning team. I want Canby to have a winning team. The other thing is, last year, I believe it was the amendment was strictly for the football games, but yet, on graduation, fireworks went off. There's an Osprey that nested, too. So, I don't think that's conducive to the Osprey. I don't know where they do the cannons. Can anybody tell me where that is?
I don't know either.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
It looks like it's in the back baseball field.
That's where the Ospreys have nested. So...
Yeah. But I was just asking, because you're closer to me, and I know they indicated they were looking for an alternative. I was just wondering if you had experienced or noticed a difference at all, or if it feels the same to you as a year before.
This much.
Okay.
But that's me personally. Other people might think differently.
I think that's helpful for us.
That's good to know.
Well, thank you.
Did you have a question, Counselor Parker?
I just wanted to call. I just wanted to say thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, well, like I say, I appreciate your input, too.
And I do remember the deal being football only.
It is. The ordinance is football only.
And I heard in the graduation, too.
And we talked about that when we were discussing it, is that there were kind of other times that they went off and whether or not those would be included. So, maybe we should revisit that.
Yeah, strictly football games. So, we do want to know about times outside of that, for sure.
Yeah, they're supposed to seek a variance for any other occasion if they want to make that sort of noise.
All right. Next up, we have Daniel Sterns. And Daniel wants to talk to us about the cat tax. That's not a tax on felines. That's a tax on the Canby area transit tax that funds the buses.
Well, I'm not here to oppose it or be for the tax. I own a tax practice and work in a tax practice. So, the cat tax is an income tax, and it's based on the federal income tax, basically self-employment tax. But one of the aspects of that tax is that you have to complete your federal tax return before you can know what the Canby tax assessment will be. Oftentimes, especially more complicated returns, people file extensions, and the tax isn't due federally until October 15th, and that's when we know, or hopefully before the 15th. But I had a client, and it's happened several times, different people, but this year, that for some reason forgot to file an estimated or extension one. The Canby, City of Canby, then, I believe, about June assessed a tax against him, and in July sent him to a collection agent. Of course, this is before his federal tax could be completed. Now, I don't want you to feel too bad for this person, because it ended up, what they had assessed and what the collection agency was supposed to collect was much, much lower than the actual tax that he was supposed to pay. And I think that's a little bit ridiculous. My suggestion to the City of Canby would be, if you're going to summarily assess tax against individuals, that you wait at least until after October 15th. You might end up getting more money that way, and you'll save a lot of people a lot of hassle and headache. And you still get the same amount of money. You get the interest for not being paid by the 15th and everything. But it's just, it just seems like a lot of time cost and aggravation for something that's a normal business practice amongst many people, to file these extensions. And a lot of the reasons why they file extensions is because tax law nowadays is so complicated that you can't get a qualified person. Like, my office, we often like extend everybody almost, because, you know, there's only so many personnel and can't do a good job without extending them. So, I just thought I'd let you guys know that, perhaps you guys are a little bit jumping the gun as a city towards assessing people who may have not filed by the 15th. And plus, it's not really even clear on the form. There's something like an estimate or something, but it's not really clear on the form how to do that. I kind of know, but a lot of times people don't. And I try to help people out, but a lot of times, it's after these assessments and collections have been sent.
Gotcha.
That's basically what I wanted to tell the city of Canby, and just entertain the idea of not being so jumpy.
Gotcha. Well, thanks for the input. Remind me, October 15th, is that the federal extension deadline?
If you extend it to October 15th...
Twice?
No, just one extension nowadays. It goes to the 15th. If you're a partnership, which also pays the cat tax, they're extended till September 15th.
Okay.
But either way, you don't know how much cat tax you owe until you do that.
So, I got you. That's a good question. Circle back with our staff on that. Did you have something, Rick?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I'll ask our finance director to listen to this recording that you just provided now to get the background. I don't know the detail or the collection protocols and processes that are in place for our transit tax, but by listening to this, I think it's a good starting point.
Yeah, if you don't send it by about the 15th of April, because I've actually got one myself by mistake a couple of years ago, and that didn't make me upset. It kind of made me upset, but I went to the office and I cleared it up real quickly, just because I changed names on the business. But it was really quick, and you're like, okay, you know.
Gotcha. Thanks, Daniel. Always good to see you.
Jim, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can I ask you a question?
Are you asking Daniel or Rick?
You stand by, because this may require clearing up my ignorance, maybe as a two-person job. But I was told in the past that the cat tax was based upon the number of employees you had.
No.
Well, here, we've got another tax expert.
I can attest through personal experience as a business owner in town that it's not. It is based on your company's income. And I filed an extension for my company this year and got the form, and it was going to get... Like, I went through that exact experience, and I came to the office, and the city was great. The customer service experience was great. But it's not based on number of employees. It is your company income.
Well, actually, to be technical, it's based on your self-employment tax earnings.
Right.
So, you can have income that's not subject to the cat tax, but you have some income that is, and some of that depends on what kind of energy you have. If the tax were much higher, I could probably tell you by how to evade it completely by switching to an S corporation.
But my company got a bill, so I'm not sure of the nuance of it. I'm not...
LLC that filed partnership, you have to pay. You have to pay it. So, I prepared it for lots of people, so I kind of know the rules on it. But it's a...
Yeah. But it's not by number of employees. It is by total income for the...
Yeah, my only point was just to move the summary gotcha assessment from June to like maybe October.
Yeah, if there are loopholes, we'll look into them, see if we can get them blocked. Thank you for letting us know.
All right. Thanks, Daniel. And you said shelter, not evade, right?
Right. Yeah, and sheltered.
I was teasing. All right.
Is that the difference between a Democrat and Republican vocabulary?
No, that's having a city attorney in the audience.
Thank you.
Thanks, Daniel. Always good to see you. Next up, we have Les Poole from Gladstone, who wants to talk to us about tolling.
Look at the smiles. Good evening. I'm a Clackamas County citizen. I live in Gladstone, but friends and family all across the county. And I've been involved in a lot of different projects and activism. And it stems from being involved with land use and transportation. And as you know, when you're involved with land use and transportation, the politics and the knowledge and the headaches and the good part all come to you. And I've got a background in material handling and logistics, so I come to you as someone who is a chief petitioner for IP-10. And our goal is to get the state's plan to toll us for use existing lanes on the highways on the ballot. So, I'm not here to pontificate about my objection to it, but I want you to know that it's not a knee-jerk thing that I or others are doing. And it stems from the 2017 Transportation Bill. And I testified in Salem with deep concerns that by the time that bill came out, funding for I-205 expansion and some other critical highways, freeways, wouldn't be there. And unfortunately, that was the case, but we were told that tolling would be a possibility as a way to fund that. And ultimately, in the end, what we got, or what came out from the state, was an authorization to reduce congestion by charging us to use existing lanes and not expanding the highways. I think that's a misplaced priority. So, as a petitioner along with Julie Parrish and Mike Nierman, I'm here to share with you that tolling will have a very profound impact here in Canby. And I cannot imagine how many folks are going to be trying to come down through Aurora and through Canby to avoid that 205 tolling mess. The public is very adverse to this. And when the public gets really adverse to something, they will actually spend their time and money, might seem wasteful, to go around it. So, I want you, as a city, to please take my message strongly. This is not the answer. And you may receive promises that some of the tolling money may come your way. Certainly, that could happen. But I would not count on where that money's going to go, what we're going to get for it. And I certainly, again, would hope that the city would keep this subject in your minds. I'm sure you've probably had some thoughts or conversations already, and you will in the future. I do have a Facebook page. It's the Vehicle Transportation Alliance, and I invite folks to follow that. I'm trying to just give information out. And it's not just the anti-tolling page. I'm certainly an advocate for roads and transportation. While in this particular situation, I'm adamant opposition to what I see happening. So, I do appreciate the opportunity to speak, as always. And I wanted to say one last thing. What an awesome fair. What an awesome fair.
Thanks, Les.
Yeah, it's always good, and it speaks well to the community. So, thanks again for your time, and I'm sure we'll talk again.
Thank you, Les. Appreciate it. All right. And next up, we have Catherine Christensen. Didn't give me a topic, but you have a Marine flag, so...
I have a Marine flag. Yes, I do. Well, I'm really excited to sit down and talk to you guys. I need to pull this up so I can actually read it, so give me a second. On June 5th, the city council, or Councilor Hensley, acting on behalf of the Canby American Legion, recognized several of our young men in the community who were graduating from high school and heading off to various branches of the military. On June 10th, our grandson, Nicholas Gonzalez, shipped out to Marine boot camp. And here we are, almost three months later, and as of tonight, he is right in the middle of the crucible. The crucible is the final culmination, consisting of 54 hours, 48 miles, 45 pounds of gear, 36 warrior stations, 29 team-building exercises, all on six hours of sleep and two MREs. They are about halfway through it. And because they were recognized at the city council meeting in June, Paul Phillips, whose son, Jackson, also graduated a while back, had started a tradition of laying the flag out, the Marine flag out, the fire station, and having people come by and sign it. Well, since you guys recognized, I brought the Marine flag and was wondering if you all, staff included, would like to just put a signature on this Marine flag for Nikko, because as of Friday, unless he breaks a bone or says, "I quit," which I don't think is going to be happening, he will officially be a United States Marine.
Oh, very good.
Semper Fi. So, I would just like to lay this out. And you guys, if you want to sign it now, or if you want to sign it after the meeting, or whatever you want to do, I would invite you to do that.
How about if we could sign it after the meeting? Gordon will be here. He can take it back home?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
And remind us how to spell Nikko's name.
N-I-K-K-O.
N-I-K-K-O.
Uh-huh. So, and then also, for those of you out in TV land, I will be placing this flag out tomorrow at the fire station on the 911 memorial. So, if anyone would like to come by and just give a congratulatory message, or just sign your name, or whatever, the fire station's also flying a special flag out there, a special U.S. flag up on the flagpole, that they'll fly until he is finished with the crucible.
Oh, very good.
So, this is Paul Phillips. He started it for his son, Jackson, and he's hoping to continue the tradition for every young person in Canby that goes through the Marine Corps.
Very good.
Very cool.
So, you got a Sharpie there for us and everything?
Yes.
Excellent.
We'll be glad to. Thank you, Catherine.
We will sign that.
Okay.
Give him our congratulations.
Sorry.
Yeah, you want to... If you're staying, great. If not, you could leave it with Joe?
I can stay.
Okay, super. Excellent. Yeah, my own nephew is a second lieutenant in the Corps, becoming a naval aviator right now. So, yeah, near and dear to my heart. And speaking of young men, we have some scouts with us tonight.
Yay.
Yay. From Troop 882, that meet down at the Canby Rod and Gun Club. So, gentlemen, why don't you step up and come on forward? I think Gabe's going to talk to us. They're here for their Citizenship in the Community Merit Badge.
Come on up, guys.
Maybe some future Marines in there.
There could well be.
Or Army or Navy.
Look at all the merit badges.
Or Air Force. So, I'm Gabe.
I'm Noah.
I'm Sean.
I'm Spencer.
I'm Jack.
We're from Troop 882, and the five of us are here working on our Citizenship in the Community Merit Badge. And some of the requirements for this merit badge were to attend a city council meeting and ask one of the people who were there questions. So, we talked to Councilor Varguen, is it?
Varguen.
Yeah. We asked some questions. I asked about funding for schools. What did you ask about, Noah?
Homeless people.
Drug addiction.
Recycling issues.
I just completed my [inaudible].
I do it, too.
I do it, too.
You asked about the small-town feeling of Canby?
Small-town feel.
Oh, small-town feel. Good.
Yeah, so, we're here to get that merit badge and see what being a part of a city council is kind of all about.
Very good.
Very cool. Glad you're here.
And tell everybody here what you told me. You told Counselor Varwig about particular community concerns. Now, what happens? You're watching us, right?
Yeah. So, one of our other requirements is to view the council meeting and see one of like the debates, is what A to put it, and see when like sides are taken, to put what side you feel most strongly about, and like how the city council goes about solving the issue, and like what ends up happening in the end.
Very good. There you go.
Very good.
Well, thanks for coming, guys. Appreciate it.
Glad you're here.
Yeah. Excellent.
And I will say, they asked me the questions, and they did a very good job, and they asked some wonderful, deep, thoughtful questions. And so, I told the guys, but I'll say in front here, I'm very proud of them and the questions that they asked. And I was honored to be able to answer those questions for you. So, thank you for being here tonight, guys.
Thank you.
It was great. Thanks, gentlemen. Keep tabs on us.
Okay.
Please do.
And before you know it, you'll be old enough to run to be up here yourselves. There you go. Alrighty. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Was there any more citizen input tonight from anyone? All right. You'll have another chance later at the end of the meeting. Under mayor's business, I will save it for the mayor for next time, except I know he would like Rick to brag about Canby and what place we came in this year for safety.
Yes, and I didn't...
And I didn't warn Rick ahead of time.
We, in one of the polls, and it was a public safety-related poll, the city of Canby was recognized as the fourth safest city in the state of Oregon.
Very good.
And so, this is where we have been appearing in almost every poll from all different types of agencies that crunch these numbers. We're always in the top 10, which is, I think, a very strong reflection on both the council's commitment to public safety in the community and our law enforcement officers' commitment to doing the jobs that keep us all safe. So, thank you to law enforcement. We have one in the audience tonight, plus our esteemed Chief Davis. And it just, you know, it obviously makes me proud. I actually went home and told my wife right away that we're still in the top 5 and right where we should be.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. It is wonderful. It is wonderful to be safe in your town and to be recognized for it. That poll is for cities 10,000 and over, right?
Yes.
So, you have to be a real town. You have to have some challenges. So, that's great. Next up, we have councilor comments and liaison reports. And let's mix it up tonight, because the mayor's not here. Start with Counselor Swoon.
Hi, thank you, President Dale. You didn't... Poor Counselor Bricky. I was ready for you to go first and see what you had. I don't have a ton. CTV 5 is this Friday. I wanted to thank Bridging Cultures. They finished their summer picnic in the park series. This last, was it last Saturday? And it's been a great community event that they do every year. They do four to five picnics in Locust Park. And then also, this is Canby's big weekend. So, Friday night is the street dance at 6 o'clock. I'm looking at Rick. Is it 6? 6 o'clock on the Backstop Parsons Grand Building corner there. And then, we also have the car show, the cruise-in on Saturday. The Dahlia Run is this weekend. The Dahlia Festival is this weekend. Movies in the Park is Saturday night. It's the Princess Bride sunset. And yeah, I'm pretty excited. And so, yeah, so come down and be a part of the community and meet some neighbors or hang out with neighbors you already know. That's what I have this week.
Very good. Thank you, Sarah. Counselor Varwig?
Thank you very much. I brought props.
Is it the baton?
Yay.
Oh, you win. I don't know what game we're playing.
I know.
Yeah. Follow me after this one, huh?
Next week, I'm bringing a fog machine.
Yeah, there you go.
This is to show you that our new Library of Things is now up and running in our Canby Public Library. So, these are all items that can be checked out from the library. Don't stay gone too long, because I don't want soap in people's eyes. But we've got lots of different stuff from an automotive diagnostic scanner. So, if you ever... So if you ever had a check engine light on in your car and wondered what that was without paying $65 to have that checked, now you can check one of those out here at the library. Lots of different things. You can look at the stars when the telescope is pointed our way, and you can play some karaoke, so, or have a party karaoke party, so we'll probably do that at the next council meeting. We'll all have a song that we're gonna sing.
No.
No, not really, but the library has done a great job of putting this together, so make sure that you guys check this stuff out, come in and use it. You do have to be 18 or older to check stuff out, so that's on this little flyer that I'm just reading here. So, seven-day checkout periods, no renewals, so it's just a really fun thing that we're doing here, and it's up and going, so come check it out. And then as far as Fire Board, Chief Davis gave us a great report last time, and so that stuff is still true.
That stuff is still true.
That is all still true.
That's good.
And I would add that the funding for all of these items was donated, so this does not come from the library's regular budget.
Very good.
It's funding that was donated for the acquisition of these items.
Thank you for that clarification, I didn't mean to say that. I know some people might wonder why we have these and are closed today.
Yeah, we're closed on Sunday, but we have a bubble machine. Yeah, that's a fair question.
It was all donated.
Priorities, counselor. I want to check out the bubble machine.
Yeah, and Chief Davis, if you will, it's only three weeks away. The 9/11 ceremony will be same as always this year at 8:00, and will start inside the building this year.
Right.
Okay, and then move outside for the tolling. All right, so make sure we get that on our calendars, 8:00 a.m. on 9/11.
Yeah, it was a little soggy last year.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Hensley.
Actually, I don't have a much of a report. I was super busy with the fair. It was an awesome fair, so thank you to all those folks that work the fairgrounds. And, yeah, 11,000 to 13,000 steps a day, I lost three pounds, so I'm having a happy time. That's all my report.
Very good. And Counselor Parker, I saw you at the fair a bunch of times.
Yes.
Yeah, as a Fire Board member, I was. First, I want to thank Counselor Dale, who showed up at midnight one night when we were having some problems on the fairgrounds, so that was above and beyond duty. Thank you.
Sure.
You're always dependable there. I haven't gotten an official report yet from our Fire Board office, but it was my observation that we were running at about 90 to 100% capacity.
Excellent.
And part of my job as a Fire Board member was to go around and ask people how they were enjoying themselves, and we got pretty, pretty good remarks. If anything, some people were complaining about it being too crowded, so we'll try not to be so good next time. But one of the things for, for operational geeks like me is that we made a conversion over to online ticketing.
Yes.
And, and, and being an old systems guy, I did not expect this to work very well. And, and it was almost 100% effective. We, we had onsite, in a van, a monitor who was able to track every ticket as it was being scanned, so if there were duplicates or if there was a problem, we could handle it real-time. And it also, as an organization, gives us analytics on where people are from, what their email is, what days they came to, and that sort of thing. So it really lets us move up to the next level of, of marketing. So, very pleased, and tons of volunteers showed up. Counselor Hensley was there every day, and so it was a tiring type of thing to be on all day, but it was one of those fun things that you enjoyed, opening up your city and welcoming people too. Historic Review Commission, I passed last meeting to save some time for our hearings, I did want to recognize that our Chair, Tony Crawford, has resigned in order to take a job as a head of an educational program in Egypt, so-
For one year.
For, for one year, but it is, it, it's a terrific opportunity for Tony, but, you know, he's one of those 200 people in Canby that makes the city run. Finally, my report out of the Canby Adult Center. They don't need anything, their building's fine. We've got this funny relationship with them, where we're the, we're the landlord, so every month I go and talk to them and say, "Do you need anything?", and they said, "No", but they're always interested in the reports on the City Council on what we're doing. So they, they seem to be amused by whatever it is that I have to say, but we keep the lines of communications open. And I will report that, that this Canby Adult Center is one of the best-funded and most-popular in the area. That we've, throughout the country, adult center business models are failing in some cases, and a couple years ago, the Adult Center in Canby set about a capital campaign and has put itself on some very good footing. They don't want me to say they're on real good footing.
Not that.
Not that good, but it's, it's, it's really a neat operation there. That's all I have tonight.
Thanks, Counselor.
Sure.
I have two questions about the fair. It was great, I saw you there. First, when they do ticket sales onsite, instead of the online ticket sales, like when people buy them at the booth, do we, do they track zip codes or anything so that we can see where our tourists can come from on scale?
I don't think we do that with our onsite scale. That's part, part of, part of the reason for moving over to an, an online system is so that we have all those metrics, analytics, excuse me. And, and 95% of all of our ticket sales is, is online.
Oh, wow.
And, and we did not, we did not have failures at any of our scanning stations. You know, when you've got, when you've got that many scanners around that many places, you know, Tim, that you're gonna have something go down, but not once-
Wow, that's awesome.
Did that go down. So, sometimes, this was kind of cool, sometimes the vendors ran out of food, so that was, that was kind of fun.
And you had a second question?
Yes, I have one more question. I was thinking about ways that we can, we can get convergence between the fairgrounds and our downtown businesses, and I was wondering if, in the future, the fairgrounds might consider, like, they take your ticket, the whole ticket, when you check in? I thought it might be interesting to see if we can collaborate in the same way, to get them to just pull the tab so that people could use their ticket for proof for a discount somewhere else in town. Like, if they, if they went to the fair, they could maybe, businesses could decide to give a discount for fairgoers or something, but right now, I was thinking, as they took my whole ticket, that there's no really way for me to demonstrate that I came to the fair, right? If we wanted the businesses to be able to leverage that traffic, and I was just thinking, maybe in the future-
Yeah, we, that's in the mix.
Okay.
And, and even better than that is the institutional organization, the triad that we now have, in that our, our marketing guy, Tyler, at the fair-
Yeah, Tyler's pretty great.
-is, is on the Chamber Board, and along with the Chamber President is meeting with Calvin, our Tourism Coordinator. So, so we now have an interconnect between those three to bring those organizations even closer together, so-
Because the perfect storm is if they come to the fair, they spend a couple dollars downtown before they leave too, right? That's the perfect storm.
Right, and, and, and so the structure for making those decisions are now there. We, we, we finally have a forum where those three entities are sitting down every month and talking. Now, it's a matter of coming up with the individual strategies that you're talking about.
As far as the ticket-taking, I think it depends on the ticket-taker, because half of the days that I went to the fair, they scanned my ticket, and I still left with it.
Okay.
And then a couple times, they take them. It just depends on the ticket-taker.
I don't think they had a particular rule.
Yeah, once they scan it, they don't need it.
They just want to hear the beep.
Yeah, and then they're done, so that was an awesome idea, though.
But if everyone's sitting in the same room together now, we can get strategies to leverage each other and- Right. Oh, that's great. Yeah, thanks, man.
Well, I did my part to support the fair. My daughter wanted a pink panda with a pink mohawk, and I spent about $120 trying to win that stupid thing.
Me too.
It took a lot, and we'll just say she does not have a pink panda with a pink mohawk, and she's very sad about it.
Oh, no.
You call yourself a fox.
I have two stuffed, I have two stuffed tacos that have mustaches, and I don't want, I don't even know how much those cost me, so-
They got plenty of stuffed animals, they just didn't get the pink panda with the pink mohawk, and that was the end of the world.
He'd have sold it to you for 50 bucks cash.
Right.
He wouldn't do it?
No.
Wow, he knew you were a bad shot.
Exactly.
He knew he could milk you for more.
Counselor Bergy.
So, Planning Commission, last week, they looked at a minor land partition application. Looks like they're, they moved to approve it with stipulations on a existing carport, and they were also looking at doing some modifications to the Chapter 16.08, so that might be coming our way pretty soon.
Very good.
I also reached out to the Northeast Neighborhood Association Chair, Pavy Vargas, I probably just butchered her first name. They have not met in several years, so if they get that going back again, then they'll reach back out to me, so.
Very good.
I'll follow on that one.
Yeah, the neighborhood associations tend to meet when something's flaring up.
Right.
I have a delightfully active neighborhood association.
Yes, you have Jackie to thank for that, yes. Jackie's awesome.
Yeah, Jackie's what does it. Yeah.
Yeah, it's because of Jackie. The other three, not so much going on.
And for myself, nothing particular to report from Canby Utility. Likewise, I was at the fair both, and rodeo both visiting and working. At the rodeo, I was there Tuesday night, and just got lucky, I saw Counselor Parker there Tuesday night as well, we were both there. Wayne Brooks, the announcer, said that was our, what, strongest night in terms of talent? We had six world champions, including the current reigning and five-time world champion bull rider. So, right here in Canby, we're, we're a big spot on the map on the rodeo circuit.
Our purse is up to 150,000 now.
150,000, and we had, what was it, what'd he say, 500 competitors over the course of the week?
Yeah.
So, it's a, it's a big, big deal.
Kind of a big deal.
It is.
Up there Tuesday night, the bulls were equally as talented as the riders.
I was gonna say.
The bulls were very good, too.
Tuesday night, I think-
There was only one that held for eight seconds.
All the livestock won that night, didn't they?
Yeah.
It was a tough night on Cowboys.
I went Wednesday, the score Wednesday night was bulls 3, Cowboys 2.
Yeah, that was, yeah, Tuesday, the steers, the bulls, the broncs.
Our local boy.
Oh, it was a tough night.
Even the calves, for the calf roping.
Yeah, even they won, that was a, it was a lot of fun. I heard Friday and Saturday was a sellout for the rodeo.
That's what I heard, too.
And Saturday night was a parking lot sale, out, sell-out, is that the word you use? All three parking lots.
Wow.
And so, it was good to take advantage of the city parking lot down at the cinema.
Yeah, it's not that far to walk.
Yeah, we had to use that one a couple times, but yeah, great, successful weekend for us. Let's see, one last thing here, the city of Oregon City, our neighbors to the east, are having their 175th anniversary since incorporating, so they've got us beat by about 50 years. And although I'm 100% rah-rah Canby, 175, that's pretty respectable, and I'm trying to get points with Dan Holliday, too, the mayor of Oregon City, so, anyway, this Saturday, the 24th, down at the end of the Oregon Trail Visitor Center, some folks know it as Kelly Field, down at the intersection of Abernathy there by Home Depot, they're having a party all day long. Starts at 10:00, they've got bands, they've got exhibits, there's face painting, blow-up houses, of course, the museum down there's open, and it wraps up at 9:15 with a laser light show. That's all they've said it is, just laser light show, they had me at laser.
Okay.
So, if you're interested in that, yeah.
Between Canby events.
Between Canby events, if you happen to be down there.
But Princess Bride.
Yeah, Princess Bride wins.
Princess Bride always wins.
So just wanted to let you know about that going on next door in Oregon City. All right, next up, we have the Consent Agenda. It is as printed on the front page there.
Mr. Counsel President, I move that we approve the minutes of the July 24th, 2019 City Council Special Meeting.
Second.
Alrighty. It's been moved by Counselor Hensley, seconded by Counselor Spoon, to approve the Consent Agenda, which consists of the approval of the minutes of the July 24th, 2019 City Council Special Meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? And it carries 6-0. Thank you. There is no public hearing tonight, so we'll move on to Resolutions and Ordinances.
And first up, you have Resolution 1325, it's adopting a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Canby and the Canby Police Association for the period from July 1st of this year through June 30th of 2022, and that, of course, repeals Resolution 1254. And Amanda Ziber is here to present that item.
Alrighty, Council has been briefed by Amanda over email with the salient points of the collective bargaining agreement, and did you have anything that came in that you needed to tell us in public, or are you taking care of it?
No, nothing different, just a reminder that we generally do three-year contracts. This contract, current contract expired at the end of June, so we met and conferred with the police association and have a tentative agreement, had come to a tentative agreement. The police association ratified, so the next step is to bring it forward to the council for ratification and approval, and that's what you have in front of you tonight.
Okay.
Mr. President, I move to approve Resolution Number 1325, a resolution adopting a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Canby and the Canby Police Association for the period from July 1st, 2019, through July 30th, 2022, and repealing Resolution Number 2, 1254.
And a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Hensley, seconded by Counselor Bergy, to approve Resolution 1325, adopting a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Canby and the Canby Police Association for the period from July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2022, and repealing Resolution 1254. Is there any discussion by the council or questions on that? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? And it carries 6-0.
Next up, you have Ordinance 1515, this is for second reading, it'll be a roll-call vote, and it is authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Kern MacLeod Incorporated, consulting engineers for design and construction phase engineering services for the 2019 wastewater treatment plant primary clarifier improvements, and Rick Robinson will briefly present.
Briefly present. Funny, though.
Was that a hint?
As I shared with you at the last council meeting, primary clarifier is kind of the front end of the wastewater treatment system, it separates the solid from the liquid, and then the liquid is further treated before it's released. This contract with Kern MacLeod, which will take the project through to construction, is for an amount not to exceed $130,000. The construction project estimate is $1.365 million. This is part of the capital improvement plan for the city's wastewater treatment plant.
Did anybody have any follow-up questions or anything from last meeting, questions?
Sean? I move to adopt ordinance Number 1515, ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Kern MacLeod Incorporated, consulting engineers for design and construction phase engineering services for the 2019 wastewater treatment plant primary clarifier improvements.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Varwig, seconded by Counselor Hensley, to pass Ordinance 1515, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Kern MacLeod, Inc., consulting engineers for design and construction phase engineering services for the 2019 wastewater treatment plant primary clarifier improvements. Roll-call vote.
Counselor Bergy.
Aye.
Counselor Parker?
Aye.
Counselor Hensley?
Aye.
Counselor Dale?
Aye.
Counselor Varwig?
Aye.
Counselor Spoon?
Aye.
And that passes 6-0. Off to Ordinance 1516. Off to Ordinance 1516.
And 1516, as an ordinance proclaiming annexation into the city of Canby, Oregon, all remaining portions of Southeast Township Road right-of-way, public right-of-way, roughly 2.4 acres located between the western boundary of Malala Forest Road and the western boundary of Malala Road, including the portion of right-of-way that crosses Union Pacific Railroad at crossing Department of Transportation 760-205P mile post 748.30. This is also for second reading.
And I am very familiar with this ongoing acquisition process, have been involved in it from the beginning, so I told Ryan and his staff that they didn't need to stay through the night for this one item. This will place into county control Southeast Township Road. As you probably understand, Malala Forest Road is our logging road, walking trail, and the area that we'll be annexing is from the logging road, walking trail on Township Road to the Malino Road, and it would be that the west side of Malino Road does not cross Malino Road. This is necessary as we continue to build out that area. Some of this annexation should have actually occurred a while back as we annex properties, but it was just, we'd missed it, so we're working collaboratively with the county to remedy this.
Were there any follow-up questions from last time on this one?
No, but I'll say this is probably the easiest annexation that we'll ever deal with.
The least controversial one you'll ever see.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
No neighbors so far complaining.
Council President, I move to adopt Ordinance 1516, an ordinance proclaiming annexation into the city of Canby, Oregon, all remaining portions of Southeast Township Road public right-of-way, roughly 2.4 acres located between the western boundary of the Malala Forest Road and the western boundary of Malino Road, including the portion of Row that crosses Union Pacific Railroad crossing Department of Transportation 760-205P mile post 748.30.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Spoon, seconded by Counselor Varwig, to approve Ordinance 1516, proclaiming annexation into the city of Canby, Oregon, all remaining portions of Southeast Township Road public right-of-way, roughly 2.4 acres located between the western boundary of the Malala Forest Road and the western boundary of Malino Road, including the portion of right-of-way that crosses Union Pacific Railroad crossing Department of Transportation 760-205P at mile post 748.3. Was there any discussion on this one? All right, roll call vote.
Okay, Counselor Bergy?
Aye.
Counselor Parker?
Aye.
Counselor Hensley?
Aye.
Counselor Dale?
Aye.
Counselor Varwig?
Aye.
Counselor Spoon?
Aye.
And it passes 6-0.
Okay, next up, you have Ordinance Number 1517, and this is also for second reading. This is authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with own equipment for the purchase of one 2019 Elgin Crosswind 1 Street Sweeper for the Canby Public Works Department.
Yes, again, as Joe had mentioned, this is up for second reading. We have a street sweeper that we've been operating since 1996, which is approximately 23 years. It has seen the best days that it is going to see. We...
We all have.
Especially me, I guess. The purchase price is $281,751. We will receive a whopping $2,500 trade-in for our 1996, and we're grateful to get that.
Yes, we're pretty happy with that.
The value of the metals in it, I would guess. So, the net purchase price is $279,251. It is in our 2019-20 budget.
All right, any questions, discussion about that one?
No, Mr. President, I move that we adopt Ordinance 1517, authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with own equipment for the purchase of one 2019 Elgin Crosswind 1 Street Sweeper for the Canby Public Works Department.
One second. I think Sean just barely got that one.
He squeaked in. No hesitation.
All right, Counselor Hensley has moved, and Counselor Varwig has seconded approving Ordinance 1517, authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with own equipment for the purchase of one 2019 Elgin Crosswind 1 Street Sweeper for the Canby Public Works Department. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Counselor...
Oh, you got a question?
I just had a segment that, before I got on the council, I did not appreciate how much citizens liked clean streets. That when I talk to citizens, that's one of the first things they say.
They do.
Is that they like their streets clean, so.
And most people know what day of the month they come.
And most people know what day they come, so anything we can do to help with a nice new piece of equipment, I'm all for.
It's good. I do have to say, Rick, that I get a twisted sense of humor when they come on garbage day, and you see everybody's conflicted. Ah! Okay, on the sidewalk, because they want their streets clean.
Yeah.
They want their streets clean.
That's right.
All righty, roll call vote.
Thank you. Counselor Bergy?
Aye.
Counselor Parker?
Aye.
Counselor Hensley?
Aye.
Counselor Dale?
Aye.
Counselor Varwig?
Aye.
Counselor Spoon?
Aye.
And that passes 6-0.
And next up...
They're all deciding against careers in government.
Yep. This is boring.
Well, these are all second readings. This is the night of second reading.
We've already debated these things, sorry, boys.
So, next up for second reading is Ordinance 1518. It's establishing a budget of $475,000 for the construction of a splash pad and related improvements, and authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with 2KG Contractors Incorporated for design and construction of a splash pad and related improvements, and authorizing the city administrator to approve change orders within the established budget and to sign those other documents required for the completion of the project, and then, of course, declaring an emergency.
Declare an emergency, because we have to have an emergency splash pad.
Emergency splash pad.
We want that splash pad before or on Memorial Day.
You want to tell your constituents to wait?
I should say, it's funny. Rick, like, I'll be gone long before then, so you do whatever you want to do. All right.
Rick, can you explain to the scouts what an emergency really means?
Why is there an emergency clause? The boys want to know. I love your style.
An emergency clause is really written in the statute to provide an opportunity for the governing body when they see a, kind of an overarching concern or desire or need for an action to be taken that is time-sensitive. It provides an opportunity for the council to not only do the second reading and adoption, but also the implementation on the same day. Absent the emergency finding, then after the second reading, the final adoption doesn't occur until after 30 days beyond the second reading, and this just provides an opportunity for the governing body to work faster where there is, there's a defined, identifiable, and supported reason to approve the emergency.
An emergent situation for the safety and welfare of the community, Rick?
Or because it's going to rain and we're paving streets. Yeah, I was going to say, I was going to say, one of the other reasons we've used it in the past is because the summer season is coming to an end, and we need to do some roadwork, right? Or like, anytime, we need to do something quickly.
Yeah, we, and it can constitute, and the statute is broadly defined enough to allow us to take action where, and in this particular case, the project is time-sensitive. There's a very strong desire in our community to be able to facilitate the completion of this project and have it open by next summer season so that everybody can enjoy it for the full year. By the same token, we use an emergency declaration when we are trying to beat the weather, and you'll see that in the next ordinance that we're going to be considering, where we have a project that is very, very weather-sensitive, we're trying to get it done before the winter rains start, because if we fail that, then it will be next spring before we're able to start the project. So, and there is an issue of community health and safety associated with that project as well, because it is the replacement of an all-weather surface at one of our community parks. So, those are the bases and the reasons that we do it, and, you know, I'll admit that we sometimes, for expedience sake, and some people could argue that a splash pad isn't an emergency, but I would argue with you that on June 1, if the splash pad's not open, that every one of these councilors is going to get phone calls.
We're going to hear about it.
And they're going to ask why it wasn't done. So, for me, it's an emergency.
Which could lead to some other emergencies.
Could lead to other emergencies. So, all that being said, thank you for that, Rick.
Rick, you game for this one, Rick?
Game for this one.
All right. Go for it.
So, I propose...
I move to adopt.
I move to adopt Ordinance 1518, an ordinance establishing a budget of $475,000 for the construction of a splash pad and related improvements, and authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with 2KG Contractors, Inc., for design and construction of a splash pad and related improvements, and authorizing the city administrator to approve change orders within the established budget, and to sign those other documents required for the completion of the project, and declaring an emergency.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bergy, seconded by Counselor Spoon, to approve Ordinance 1518, establishing a budget of $475,000 for the construction of a splash pad and related improvements, and authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with 2KG Contractors, Inc., for design and construction of a splash pad and related improvements, and authorizing the city administrator to approve change orders within the established budget, and to sign those other documents required for the completion of the project, and declaring an emergency. Any further discussion?
I will say that this is probably the longest title I've written in four years. Give Counselor Bergy the opportunity, break him in on something like that. I don't know if that's a...
Appreciate it.
Outside of annexations with all the tax and app laws, those get crazy.
There you go.
We'll give him one of those.
All right, roll call vote.
So, Counselor Bergy?
Aye.
Counselor Parker?
Aye.
Counselor Hensley?
Aye.
Counselor Dale?
Aye.
Counselor Varwig?
Aye.
And Counselor Spoon?
Aye.
Carry 6-0.
And next up, you have, finally, Ordinance 1519, and this is also for second reading. It's authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Landscape Structures Incorporated in the amount of $81,905, and declaring an emergency.
Yes, as Joe's mentioned, the contract amount is $81,905. This material is part of the state contract, so we're able to get state contract pricing for it. We did, at the request of Counselor Parker, research the warranty and Surface America, the company that provides the playground surface material, actually warrants that material for seven years. There are all the normal exclusions, if it's not installed properly, if it's misused, if it's not properly maintained, if, you know, there's a litany of exclusions, but the general warranty is seven years, and even looking at the exclusion, this looks very typical to me of what one would expect to see in the industry.
Motion. Can I, ready?
I move to adopt Ordinance Number 1519, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Landscape Structures, Inc., in the amount of $81,905, and declaring an emergency.
And a second?
Oh, second. We're all sitting.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Varwig, seconded by Counselor Hensley, to approve Ordinance 1519, authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Landscape Structures, Inc., in the amount of $81,905, and declaring an emergency. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Counselor Bergy?
Aye.
Counselor Parker?
Aye.
Counselor Hensley?
Aye.
Counselor Dale?
Aye.
Counselor Varwig?
Aye.
And Counselor Spoon?
Aye.
Carry 6-0. Next up, we have new business findings, conclusions, and final order of annexation 18-06. Joe?
And we, this is basically a part of that annexation, and it is the, basically the appropriate order so that you're finding and concluding what needs to be done in order for that to be entered into the city.
So, you would be adopting the findings, conclusions, and final order of annexation 18-06.
Right. Mr. President, I move that we accept and adopt the findings, conclusions, and final order of annexation number 1806.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Hensley, seconded by Counselor Spoon, to adopt the findings, conclusion, and final order of annexation 18-06. Any discussion? All right, is that a, is that just a voice vote, Joe?
Yeah, that can be a...
Voice votes, okay.
Voice vote.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Carry 6-0. Next up, city administrator staff reports.
Nothing more.
Nothing for tonight? Joe?
I would like to say happy birthday to Rick Robinson, as well as happy birthday to Mayor Hodson.
Yes, they both have a birthday tonight, so happy birthday.
Birthday bubbles.
Oh, we got bubbles.
Birthday bubbles. Can we just have that at every meeting?
Irene?
For those of you...
Sean did a meh job about this. Would you like to come up and tell us some more? This is really cool.
We're very excited about the Library of Things. It's going to be launched on September 24. Each library will have its own unique collection, so whatever you pick up, wherever you see, it'll all be catalogued, so you will see each item in the catalog, but you will have to go to those libraries to pick up the specific items. These are the ones that we chose to have, that it was through a grant for the Bureau of Waste and Sustainability Management through Placenta County. So, we're very excited about it. You can loan the items for seven days, and you can reserve them, and there's just a few things. There's still stuff back in my office, Rock Tumbler, there's, oh, a Planetarium, there's some other things. That's kind of cool.
So, how do folks find out what we have to offer?
They'll be in a catalog. There'll be a whole link, you'll see the new logo, the Library of Things logo, I think, that Counselor Varwig has on the link site, and then you've got to go to the drop-down and see all the items listed.
And you can reserve them like a book?
And you can reserve them, yes.
Very good.
But they don't transfer them like a book? You have to actually go there.
They do not transfer. It's mostly because of liability. Each city has determined what level of liability they wanted to manage.
Okay.
And so, this is what we've decided to have, but we're pretty excited about the items. We're learning how to use them. We will have a petting zoo sometime in September. We're trying to work out a time where people come in and play with the items and learn how to use them.
Can people reserve them now, or can they not reserve until September 24?
They're not in the catalog yet.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so they're still loading them in the catalogs.
And if we see something, say, at Wilsonville, we'd like, we can reserve that, but we have to go pick it up.
You can reserve it, but you have to go pick it up at Wilsonville.
And return it there.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Very good.
It's all over the place. Some places have sewing machines, drills.
Wow.
Wow, that's cool.
It's like Home Depot and more.
This is amazing.
Library of Things.
Yeah. Libraries are changing. We're not just about books anymore.
So, yeah, I'm curious, is this a thing now in nationwide?
It is, a library of things, yes. It is very, yes.
So, lots of folks are doing this now?
It's tried before you buy.
Sure.
It's trying to reduce waste, and a lot of times, that's what books are.